It's six o'clock, so we're going to go ahead and open our school board meeting. We'll stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Superintendent Giesling will read the line of the notice.
Absolutely. We are the first peoples of these lands by acknowledging that the area in which we gather is within the traditional territory of the Stillbornish tribe of Indians. The Stillbornish people have inhabited these, sorry, Stillbornish people have inhabited these lands and waters since time immemorial, and their descendants have remained in this territory to this day. The Stillbornish people have continued to practice the traditional ways of their ancestors of fishing, hunting, and gathering. The Stillbornish tribe has had these lands and cultural traditions passed on to them by their ancestors. They believe that everything has a spirit and that they are the caretakers of these lands and waters.
Thank you. And for a roll call, we have Director Kincaid, Director Carey, myself, Director Dane, and I'd like to make a motion that we excuse Director Gopner and Director Ledoux tonight.
I will second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. I'd also like to make a motion, I'd like to add to New Business 6A, to add the GFPA three-year contract to New Business.
Alright, second.
Oh, I second, sorry.
There we go. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that will be added to New Business, sir. Alright, and then number two is Board Comments. Director Kincaid, you have anything for us tonight?
I don't have a lot, just I'm kind of exhausted with getting ready for school as I know everybody else is. So just hanging there, teachers, we're almost there to the first day of school. And I know Director Carey is gonna have some things to say about the shooting that occurred today in Minneapolis. But my heart goes out to all of those families, all of those teachers and students. Especially when you work in a school, in a school district, it hits a little bit closer to home. And even when you're a mother, it hits even closer to home. So I'm just thankful that we have been working towards in the last few years of making our districts here safer, the presence of Sheriff Dalton for just all the things that we've done to help prevent these things. And the best we can do is to train and to be ready, and hopefully it never happens to us.
Thank you. Director Carey?
Thank you very much. So, yeah, I, I'm going to break a little bit of personal precedence. I, as a school board director, I've always believed in focusing in governance, well-being of families we serve, steering clear of deeply political debates, but what happened in Minneapolis today compels me to speak. And I wrote it down just because I wanted to make sure that I got out kind of the depth of my feelings here. For those who are unaware, today a gunman walked up to a Catholic school and fired indiscriminately through a window while children were inside attending morning mass during their first week of school. Two children were killed, an eighteen-year-old and many more injured. And I cannot fathom the pain and the anguish felt by the students and staff in that building, by the families who now have to try and pick the pieces. Following tragedies like this, there always seems to be a national conversation about gun control, mental health, who knew what, when. This conversation is usually wrapped in, you know, some sort of political ideology, wherever you are on the spectrum. Eventually, at least in my opinion, everyone just kind of stops talking and we all move on. And then something like this happens again. So I want to implore everyone to take a moment and realize that the thing that really struck me about the tragedy today is that it wasn't about someone bypassing a locked door or outside new security measures or not having enough cameras or those types of things. It's the stark reality that, at least for me again, no level of protection can fully stop a person intent on harm from simply firing into a building, which is what happened today. And I feel deeply that we as a country, as a community, need to have an honest discussion on school safety. And keep in mind, I said school safety and what level of security we're truly comfortable sending our children into. This is a topic every parent, every community member, every teacher can participate in, no matter their feelings on gun control, the Second Amendment, or what political parties currently in power. We all want our children to be educated in a safe and loving environment. We all want to spend another evening with our kids, plan another summer vacation, see them grow and flourish. I think we can all agree there's more that we can do for school security. The uncomfortable truth is that this tragedy lays bare that no one in this room or any fully funded school district can absolutely protect against simply walking up to one of our buildings and firing indiscriminately. Are we comfortable with that reality? I for one am not. Once we determine what level of security we're comfortable with, we need to agree to work toward that end. Whatever the, whatever that agreement that we make is and push through politics and ideology, if we can all agree that only this level is sufficient, then we have responsibility to provide it. Here in Granite Falls, I feel even as a small community, we need to be a part of that discussion. We owe it to our children and to each other to face that reality, not because it's easy, but because it is unbelievably necessary. The children who survived in Minneapolis will carry the trauma of this the rest of their lives. And I don't want us to ever be that community. We've had shootings in Marysville. It's been close to home. I don't want that to happen in Granite Falls. So my ask is, in your homes, with your neighbors, in your place of worship, local football games, in this boardroom, let's have that conversation. What level of secure security are we comfortable with? And when we do, let's ask the question, what more could, should we be doing to protect our students? Should we be securing entry points, refining our safety drills, hardening school design? Maybe there's additional things. There's definitely some that we can do there. Should we strengthen partnerships with law enforcement, first responders, so things are faster? Should we expand mental health? Train our community on how to respond in a crisis, more transparent about the relative costs of safety and the impacts that that has on school buildings? And then finally, are there modifications necessary to our systems or government to make these changes effective? And I want to make clear, I'm not wrapping this in a discussion based solely upon taking guns away or changing the stuff or any of that stuff. It's just based on what level of safety are we comfortable with? I don't believe that these are partisan questions. I don't believe that they're political questions. They are community questions. And the answer we come to together will determine what kind of environment we send our children into every day. That's the work ahead of us. That's the conversation I'm asking for us to have and carry forward. I'm just terrified that this situation is just gonna be another tragedy that we all talk about for a week, and then it all kind of fades away. Let's collectively agree that now we want better for our kids and for our community. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for very passionate and compassionate words. I think that everybody is just really absorbing what has happened today. A lot of people haven't even heard about it. It will sweep, and hopefully at some point, one of these tragic events will spark a conversation that moves us forward and starts dealing with whatever it is that sparkies us over the last twenty-five and thirty years. So I'm changing a little, changing the mood a little bit. My comment is about our, the program that we had last week at Mountain Way for welcoming students and our community back to school. It was an amazing event, well-attended. I think personally, I think I cooked about fourteen hundred hot dogs. And just what the, what the community coalition, the school, all of the volunteers that came out, the folks from different services that came in and were there to answer questions and provide services for families in need. All the school supplies that were handed out, what an amazing event and a great way to start our school year. And so I'm super excited about that. And I'm glad that I was able to participate in two areas with the fire department and with the school. So I want to thank everybody that came out and helped out with that. And I look at that program and it expands every year. It was way bigger this year than it was last in every year. So amazing job for all of our staff and all the volunteers. So hats off to that. And so moving on, we're gonna go to the superintendent report.
Oh, I have a quick, under legislative report, I have a quick, sorry. No, no, it's okay. So I did get, we are a member of NSB, the National School Boards Association, and they did send me a federal advocacy and public policy team update. I'll just hit the high point. So I guess both houses of Congress are out of session until September 2nd. So basically, when they get back, I guess they only have four weeks before the new fiscal year to basically either do a continuance resolution, a CR, or, you know, obviously agree to a budget, or else there's potentially a government shutdown again. I guess the reason why that's impactful for us is that the administration, I guess the current administration may ask Congress to send monies already appropriated as education funds for fiscal year 2025 and turn, treat that funding as expired come midnight on October 1st. And there's a legal battle on whether they can do that or not. But essentially, they're just putting us on notice that there could be some, that could complicate the FY26 budget negotiations and also potentially also signal a shutdown as they're discussing that. So, you know, as we've talked about before, there's, what is it, like 3%, 4% of our budget comes from the Fed, which might seem insignificant, but insignificant to us. So just kind of a notification that there might be some issues there. So.
That's it. Thank you. Every dollar counts.
Yeah.
Okay, Superintendent Giesling, please.
Yes, so busy week. We have our teachers back today and tomorrow. And then again on Tuesday with school starting on Wednesday. In my report to the board, we want to start with a little bit of an enrollment update. Now, the enrollment at this time of year is always a moving target. We have a lot of kids that are registering, and we really keep a close eye on kindergartners. But we also don't have, a lot of times the kids that have moved away, records haven't been requested to another system. So it's our, it's our best guess as we go forward. So this is how we're looking as of today. Fourth day count is the big one. So we have the Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and then the Monday. And it's those, you know, the kids who show up and the whites of the eyes that we see. And then we'll have a much better indicator. We look pretty good. We, the capture rate on that kinder is probably, I know Marshall's back there, that's probably the area that we're the most concerned about. Hope we capture a few more kinders that we know to be out there due to birth rates five years ago. So we're keeping a close eye on that, and I'll keep the board updated as we go.
Yeah, it looks like the biggest impact there potentially, and I know from history, right? As you said, it starts and it starts to dwindle and then it comes back up. But that's a significant increase of students at the high school. Or I guess tech, yeah, at the high school, because Crossroads is a different line item there. You know, fifty more, is that right? Yeah, fifty more in 12th grade. And I know we have some space there, but Marshall, yeah.
At this point in time, they don't have the assignments for running start yet. So a lot of those seniors and juniors will end up being running start students. So their FTE will be counted at the high school once, once the actual first count happens. It'll be about forty FTE probably in running start.
Got it.
So.
We haven't taken them out yet. They are on the budget in the yellow column, but they're not out of those numbers yet.
Got it.
That's always a little bit of an estimate because we don't have many kids that are going to your run start. We'll keep it posted. Alright, just a little update. We've been doing a Did You Know campaign through the month of August on our social media. And then also just, you know, posting out some things. Last week, we had a bus ride with all of our new certificate of staff members and all of our administrators. And thank you to Sue's Parish who doned a tour guide hat and gave us all of the history of Granite Falls as we went around. And we toured, of course, through all of the buildings and then out the mountain loop, and it was great. So thank you to Transportation and our bus driver Melissa, who, we did a ninety-minute ride and it was amazing. Just then just some other examples of some Did You Know things. We have a National Night Out picture on there as well. But some things about our district, just trying to tell, you know, all the things that are happening in the system. And then there's also the picture of some of that new siding at Granite Falls High School. And thank you again to our taxpayers and the levy passage from 2022 that upgraded the siding on Granite Falls High School. There was that need, and that was completed this summer. And it looks beautiful. If you have a chance to go up to Granite Falls High School and take a look, it looks really good. They did a really nice job on that repair. Alright, our School of Rock, which is our back-to-school event, has begun. And like I said, all buildings had teachers back today, and those are some of the images of the learning that happened. Tomorrow, we start at 7:30 at Granite Falls High School and the Performing Arts Center. Our theme this year, our back-to-school message is around hope. There's decades-long research around hope and a critical component. Some people will say that hope is not a strategy, and I would argue it is a prerequisite. So that is kind of where we're grinding ourselves in. We'll be there tomorrow. And then the second half of the day, our certificate of staff members and administrators will be back in their school buildings for some more professional development. Staff are also in building on the second, which is next Tuesday. And first day with students is on Wednesday, and there is no early release that Wednesday. It's a full day. And we're excited to see our kids back in our schools. A really quick summer maintenance update. We've been, this is the final edition because we've been talking kind of all summer at every meeting, what's been happening and all of the work that our facilities and grounds and maintenance and custodial have been doing. So installation of three more water filling stations at Granite Falls High School. As you know, that was a big effort this year, and we had to involve a plumber, but the idea is to get away from single-use plastics. And our kids bring water bottles all the time to school and they're able to go refill. Those installation of those first opens is almost done in the Granite Falls High School culinary class. Those were purchased, I think it was seven years ago, Marshall? So we're getting those installed, the stadium bathroom repairs. We knew that that was the issue at graduation. And so we're getting those done. The HVAC filters are in. That's a really big job. And so thank you to Nikolai and team for that. Lots of classroom moves too, because, you know, as classes go through, they're different sizes, and sometimes we have to move teachers and things. So those are being completed. And then soon to come is some water filling stations for both our elementary schools. Wanted to make you aware of a legislative forum scheduled in October, October 23rd. This summer, I worked with a few other area superintendents. The superintendent of Lake Wood, the superintendent of Marysville, and the superintendent of Lake Stevens. And we came together to offer this opportunity for our legislators to come and be in front of a large group. It's gonna be in Everett School District. That is the date, the save the date. And we are all, they've already been reached out to and scheduled, but as we go, it's important that we encourage all of them to attend. We have had some nice representation, as you all know, in district, as they came and talked to our Tiger Cabinet students. In May, we had two representatives and one senator here in Granite Falls. And then this summer, we had one of our congresswomen was here in Granite Falls, and I was able to meet with her and talk with her. So we have been, it's been really nice to have our legislators out here in the Granite Falls area. But this is another opportunity for us to get in front of them and talk about education and funding and all of those things. So please put that save the date. If you can make it, that would be wonderful. I'll pair a send out invite as well. And then just a little of what's happening, some new things, and what's happening in the Granite Falls School District? We're starting school next week, so that's super exciting. We launched a new district website, so Emily and a team, Dan, all worked on this. This is the stuff that happens behind the scenes, and it is, it is a bigger task than anyone would ever think. To, Dan's raising his eyebrows. It really is. It's just, it's a huge task. There was many broken links. There was old data and old information on there, so please take a look at the Granite Falls website. And we will continue to update and, and those kind of things. We would rather err on the side of it being lighter right now and filling in with the correct information and links than have, like I said, broken links or incorrect information. So thank you, Emily and Dan, for all of the work you did really all last year to make that happen. A new app has been launched for transportation, and our families, we put it on our website, we've put it on our social media. Our families are able now to go in, they have to go in because we're in a cooperative with Lake Stevens. So they have to go in as Lake Stevens, but now they can see in lifetime when their child will be getting off the bus, if there's any issues, the messaging, lots to do there. The new visitor badging system is implemented. Thank you, Dan, for making that happen. We met on that several times last year, and we informed the board. The first day of school, people will be able to walk, especially kinders, to class. And after that, people will be badging, and you have to have government-issued ID to get into our schools. This is a very common practice in districts across the nation. Kind of to Director Carey, some of your point of really knowing who's coming and going and who's in our buildings. And our students and staff should always see a badge on people. So we are all badged, and if they're a visitor, it's a sticky badge that, after the government-issued ID goes in, that badge prints out, and that's what we will look for with people walking around our system. Wanted to let you know a little bit, this is another upgrade, SWINK K-12 streaming. Again, Dan and I have been working on this for probably six or eight months. Just a way to have a vetting system for the streaming services that are being used in classrooms. So we have a district-wide access, and it helps us to be, we shouldn't be streaming from personal things such as Netflix or Disney Plus or Hulu. Those, that's not legal to stream within your classroom. So this allows us to say, everything has to go through SWINK. And then it allows our teaching and learning department also, in conjunction with Board Policy 2020, it allows us to vet those things and how is it attached and how is it, you know, relevant to the curriculum and the materials and the standards that we're teaching to. Our fall sports have begun. We saw the high school, I actually saw the high school football team last night. They were having, they were having dinner outside of the high school, and they had just finished practice. First home football game is on September 12th. They are away the first Friday of September. Our new golf team has seventeen athletes out, and so that's exciting. I found out her today, they didn't have golf tees, so I made a request of a PGA Pro that I know to bring some home from work. So they, they will have them tomorrow or the next day. I hope it grabs enough because I guess they didn't have any. They were like, the golf coach goes, I didn't think of it. We had, we had no golf tees. Volleyball has their first jamboree on September 6th. I talked to a couple of players today. They're excited. Things are going well. And then girls soccer has their first home match on September 11th. And our middle school sports start practice on September 8th, which is that first Monday that we are back. Any questions? Here it up. This is gonna be great. We're super excited about tomorrow and School of Rock and seeing everyone at the Performing Arts Center. Emily Lee playing the piano. It's gonna be great. Director Dane has agreed to say a few words. So thank you for everyone who pulls that off. It's a big event. I'm really excited that we will have our cheer and our marching band. I heard a staff member say today that last year we had cheer and marching band greet our staff members as they came into School of Rock. And this teacher said today, she goes, that just made me feel so important as I walked in. And I love that because that's what we want our kids to feel like too. So we take care of those things and we greet people. And then we also have a student forum tomorrow. I have five high school students who are going to talk about their experience in our schools and answer a few questions that are staff will hear. So the process will be great. The singing will be small, and the information will be great, and we're looking forward to it.
Excellent. And no questions?
No.
Okay, just a statement is that the school or the bus program app that is launched, I think that's gonna be awesome. It seemed to get off at a little rocky start. People trying to put in that they're Granite Falls School District. And I'm not sure how, the message didn't get straight out, but it came.
And Paris, I have to give Paris props. On the social media post, it said, make sure you put in Lake Stevens. We're in a cooperative agreement. You have to enter Lake Stevens. And the people, of course, in the comments are like, it doesn't work. I can't. Somebody's like, well, it says you have to put in Lake Stevens.
It was nice that there were some people who followed up and said they're already using this app, and it's fantastic. And I wish it was around when my kids were in school because it would have been not, when the school buses were delayed. When I'm standing out waiting and wondering why thirty minutes after they were supposed to be dropped off, there's no bus.
It's amazing what can detain a bus, right?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Okay.
So dad's been halfway to work and the kid calls and like, I'm gonna see the bus. And you turn around and the bus shows up, and you're like, I guess I gotta turn around and head back to work. Yeah, that's great.
Alright, so next is items from the floor, and we have one person who is going to talk.
Yeah, we should have to read the speech.
Yes, and so just, what's your name?
Rosalie Smith.
Rosalie Smith, okay, Rosalie. So there's a little statement that I have to read, and I think it was provided to you prior to the meeting, so.
Well, we can, although it's my first time.
Okay, well, I will probably talk more than you. So the public comments section of the agenda is an opportunity for people to address the school board. Since this is a business meeting for the Granite Falls School District Board of Directors, the purpose of public comment is for the interest to communicate with the board of directors about items on the agenda or specific work within the scope of the school district. This is not a time for the audience to address each other. People may submit public comment for the school board meeting either by reading their comments aloud in person or by submitting the comments in writing. The board reads all written comments, which are later attached to the meeting, excuse me, agenda and available to the public on the Board Docs website. If you are presenting your comments in person, we, please begin by stating your name, your city of residence, your relationship to the district, and the agenda item or school district topic you are addressing. We request that if your comment consists wholly or partly of texts verbatim from an article, an online post, or excerpt from a book, et cetera, you simply send us the link to the text and spend your comment time telling us how the information relates directly to the, to district work. Please limit your comments to three minutes. If a comment becomes too lengthy, I may need to interrupt. Please make your statement in a civil manner without disparaging, name-calling, or otherwise targeting any person, group in the district. Similarly, we ask everyone in the audience to show respect and listen quietly without talking or whispering to each other so that everyone can hear each comment. The board does not typically act on items brought forward during this portion of the meeting at this time, but may follow up. You may get a follow-up from the board, the superintendent, or staff at a later time. And the board also accepts comments and questions at any time through email. We read each email we receive and appreciate the time and the effort it takes for those who write them. So. The floor is yours.
Okay. Well, you won't have to worry about cutting me off after three minutes because when I tried to time myself, it was a minute and forty seconds. So you will be able to get home soon. Basically, what I wanted to talk about, I'm just talking to you.
You can, or you can stand up, whatever you're comfortable with, okay.
I just wanted to, well, I did say my name is Rosalie Smith. I have lived in, and everyone can hear me.
Yes, yes, you can.
Yeah. I have lived in Granite Falls for twenty-seven years. What I wanted to share with you tonight is just information about September 17th. I had talked to Paris about it. She gave me, so I don't know if I can leave information. I don't, it's just, it's, well, I'll go ahead with this part.
Okay.
This summer, I took a civic class on the Constitution. It was very informative. As you can probably figure out, it's been a while since I've been in high school. One of the issues that came up was September 17th. It said it is a federal law that stipulates public schools take time to read and study the Constitution. So I just brought some bookmarks to leave for those, I'm not, I mean, just for whoever would want to look at it or talk about it or say, well, is that true? Or even, you know, because sometimes things, but I did enjoy that class. So that's what I was just leaving, is that information if I can.
Yes, you can.
And those that want it can take it. I don't need any of it back. And then in closing, see how I keep my comments? On a more personal note, my grandson is a junior this year at Crossroads. I want what Crossroads wants for him, to graduate with the skills and tools for his future. I will be involved in that plan this year and next. I will be involved in that plan this year and next. And I also thank you for the opportunity to meet you tonight. And thank you for your dedication to our schools. That's it.
Oh, thank you so much.
Well done, Rosalie.
And and.
If you want, you can leave, give that to superintendent or actually to Paris. And I don't want you to feel like you brought it and no one's going to look at it. Sorry to interrupt.
No, that's all right.
Well, that was your decision. You know, and you might even want to check because there's so many things we aren't sure is what's. I was just excited and and like I said, even for myself, that there even was such a thing on the books about our constitution.
Well, it is good and people, especially these days, really need to be aware of that. And I know that the school district is working on programs for September 17th. So thank you very much for coming in and addressing us and it's good to meet you.
Well, I could be back because I'm going to be around more. I'm going to the picnic on, is it tomorrow?
The Crossroads.
The Crossroads, yeah. Yeah.
Same faces. All right.
Thank you.
Look forward to talking to you outside of this meeting. Great. All right, moving on to next line of business, unfinished business. Yeah, and we have a number of policies that are in the second reading. And I just asked before we start down the list, is there any significant changes that happen between the first reading and the second? Yeah, okay, perfect. All right, so then we'll move forward with that. I would like to make a motion that we accept the second reading, reading the students' defenses. All motion passes. The next one, I'll make a motion to accept the second reading of policy 3210, non-discrimination.
Second.
She got me. All those in favor signify.
Aye.
Aye. The next, second reading of policy number 4260, use of school facilities. Second. And all those in favor of.
Aye.
Aye. This is going to go really quick.
I'll make a motion this time.
Oh, yes, please.
Oh, which one are we, E? 1310, okay. I'm make a motion that we accept the second reading to amend 1310, policy adoption manuals and administrative procedures.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Second reading of policy number 2420, rating and progress reports.
I will second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
How about, I move to approve the second reading to amend policy 3226, interviews and their interrogations of students on school premises.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I move to accept the second reading to amend policy 5010, non-discrimination and affirmative action.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I'm getting a little slow, but just at least be a.
I move to accept the second reading to amend policy 5260, personnel records.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and then the last one, I move that we accept the second reading of policy 1111, Ode of Office.
I will second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that concludes unfinished business.
We're at the revised 6A, which is.
Revised 6A. Yes, so.
The, so we are thankful that we were able to get a three year contract with GFEA ratified tonight. Personally, I know myself and I'm bold enough to say the board, we're really thankful the partnership that we have with GFEA and that the, this negotiation was wonderful and I feel like everyone came to the table earnestly and looking to move the district forward. I'd like to thank the negotiation team and Director Geislin, or Director Geislin, sorry.
Superintendent.
Superintendent. Geislin, I'm going to get your title right, for the hard work. And yeah, I'm really excited about it. So I move to approve the GFEA three year contract. Yes.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I want to just add that it is refreshing to note that in today's political climate and financial climate that our board, our administration and the union could come together and actually work out an agreement well before school starts, get that off the table and we prepare our schools to be successful. And so I'm super excited about that. Here, here. All right. Uh, now B, we're going to look at the adoption of board resolution, 2526 dash zero two, intergovernmental cooperated cooperative agreement.
It was 01.
Oh, because we didn't have another A. So the 252601 intra-district cooperative agreements with other school districts.
Yeah, so speaking of the bus and why we had to put, because we have an inter-district agreement with Lake Stevens on transportation. We do this every single year where basically we just kind of renew all of those agreements and stuff like that. So pretty par for the course. So if it pleases the board, I move that we approve resolution number 252601, inter-district cooperative agreement with other school districts.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then on now B, resolution 2526 dash zero two, intergovernmental cooperation agreements with other school districts.
Yeah, same kind of thing. We go into every single year and redo it. Please, the board, I move, we approve resolution number 252602, intergovernmental cooperative agreement with other school districts.
And I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then the, we, we're going to look at the first reading to adopt policy 1825, addressing school director violations. Absolutely.
No, and we all, we all sign a board conduct policy for board directors. So this is essentially says the same thing. I mean, a board director is elected by the community. So I mean, we can't, the only thing the board could do to remove someone from the board is if they, if there's a certain level of absences. But when I read this, just speaking for myself, it's just, you know, operating in a manner that is civil and that focuses on governments and stuff like that. And that clearly defines kind of the steps that the board can take if, for some reason, there's some violation or something like that. But of the 12 years I've been here, we've always figured it out. So I would venture to say this is never going to be used, but.
We still need the guardrails in place.
I agree. I agree. I move, we accept the first read to adopt policy 1825, addressing school director violations.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and then. No, I can't and I'll be here for a while. Moving on, we have the consent agenda and.
Any addition?
They should all be on there.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I missed it.
Oh, they're all on there.
Okay, perfect, thank you. So no additions to the consent agenda. So come out with this, Carl.
It, if there's no comments, then it passes by unanimous consent.
There you go. So is there any comments?
Nope.
No, then we pass this by unanimous consent. And that will be the end of the meeting at 6:39, we are adjourned.